We'll do the pledge, please. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for all God, just your blessings, Lord. We continue to just give you praise, glory, and honor. We thank you for another beautiful day, Lord. We just pray your blessings upon this board, this community, Lord God. We ask that you continue to lead and guide us as we make decisions concerning your people, Lord. Give us insight, Lord God. Give us, Lord God, wisdom as we, Lord God, try to make the right decisions. Father, we thank you for each and everyone here. Bless everyone in this room. Bless their families. Lord God, we give you praise. We give you glory. We give you the honor. Saint Christ's name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the great will of every team and justice for all.
All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the special meeting. We have a few items on the agenda. The first one we're going to do is bid number 2223-28, chain link fence installation. Mr. Hammond?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. A little bit of a clarification. So, page one through three, Don's got a memo. We're still awarding to the low bidder, but there was a little bit of a clarification. We had asked for individual and overall, so the low bid turned out to be Bay Fence. And I think I announced in the meeting that it was Bracewell Fence. So recommend that you recognize the low bid as Bay Fence and award it to Bay Fence.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners? All right. Entend the motion that we make this correction and move forward.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Macron. Second by Commissioner Farrar. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed forward and off.
Page four is a resolution requesting. This is for the clerk's office. And it's about funding and I think it's child support. Is that right?
Right. Any questions, Commissioners? All right. Entend the motion that we accept this resolution. Motion by Commissioner Farrar?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this resolution? All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed forward and off.
Page five in your packet, Mr. Chairman. This is, we're making a request to purchase this, an emergency purchase for a 50,000 gallon water tank. This includes everything but the foundation, Don, is that, and the piping?
Foundation.
And piping. So it's $32,600. And we're in need. So this would go at the Lucy One site on Cape Water system.
All right. Any questions, Commissioner?
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Michael, we can incorporate this into the new system?
Yes. Long term, this will just be extra storage. Short term, it gives us some leeway. We're having a hard time in peak demand times keeping up, which is, which is causing us a problem. It'll also be fire protection as well. But again, we're having the problem right now. It'll probably be six or eight weeks, best case scenario, for us to get this online. But again, it just gives us extra cover in high peak demand times and fire flow as well. So yes, when we, when we eventually get through with their third phase of this and tie White City in all the way to Lucy, it'll just be extra storage.
Okay.
What kind of foundations are you going to sit on?
Don said it was a circular, solid circular foundation, but not solid all the way, just on the perimeter.
Okay.
Sit.
We put it down at Money Bow? Is that where we're going?
At Lucy One there, at the, at Dave Ben's curve.
Okay, okay.
We, we have, of course, on the North Cape, at Lucy Three, we've got 209,000 gallon storage. We've got more than that at Money Bow, but we don't really have any storage. We just have the, the mixing tanks right now.
This is going to help us back towards Simmons Bow, back toward Jones Homestead?
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion? All right. Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed forward and off.
All right. The last thing I have, well, actually, we'll go ahead and if you want to, we'll talk about property casualty. Our agent is here. We're expecting some horrible numbers, but we haven't got the numbers. So I'll let him give you a little update.
Introduce yourself and give us your address for the record, please.
Dwight Van Leer, Century Insurance, Mr. Chairman and Board. Unfortunately, in the state of the property market, in the state of Florida, and I've been communicating upfront with, with the administrator and, and staff that we would probably expect about a 50% increase in the property premium. And that unfortunately, that is the state of the market right now. And I'd had some further discussions with Mr. Lowery in regards to that, because he's on the board with one of the trust. And it's the opposite from what the county's insured with. And they're communicating the same thing that I'm communicating, you know, to y'all, basically, that the property market is going to expect about a 50% increase. The other markets are, you know, as far as the liability, the workers comp, those things, they're pretty stable. You know, they'll, they'll have a little bit of an increase, but it's the property market that's, that's killing us. Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner?
50%, that's a pretty big jump.
Yeah, it is. It's a bad jump. And, and just so you kind of have a grasp, you know, because I represent both, both trusts, okay? And I have clients that are with one trust and clients that are with the other trust. And, and I've had to communicate the same identical thing to both sides. And, and it's to the point right now that they're, you know, where normally they're going and soliciting to try to write other municipalities with, you know, the various trusts, either through Pigeon or through Florida League. They're not doing that now, because they're just hoping that they have enough insurance to be able to insure what they currently have. It's that, it's that bad. And it's due to the reinsurance markets.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Didn't you say something, though, Dwight, that you thought in a couple of years it would work out? How does that, how's that going to?
Well, a lot of that is simply due to the changes that the Florida Legislature just passed. That has, a lot of that has to do with the litigation, that Florida represented 82% of all litigation in the United States in insurance. And so, as a result of some of the measures that the Florida Legislature passed, within about an 18 month to two year period of time, everybody's expecting it to have a trend downward on rates. And it works a lot like what the workers' compensation market did back in the early 2000s, where they made, the legislature made some necessary changes, and we actually started seeing reductions. And we're still actually below the rates that we have in our comp or below what they were in like 2000.
So it's not all just gloom and doom. There's a little sunshine out there.
Yeah, hopefully, you know.
In the long term.
Yeah, yeah.
If we live that long.
Yeah. It's just the unfortunate thing is, we're all facing it. And, and you probably can even see it with your own individual, you know, whether it's your business insurance or whether it's your individual family coverages, you're probably seeing, feeling some of that same pain right now.
All right. Any more questions? We thought you was bringing us some good news, but uh...
Well, I should have actual real numbers for you within about two weeks. And, and all I can hope for is that it'll be better than the doom and gloom that I'm presenting to you right now.
All right. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The only positive that I can say is, we begged last year, and then I cussed, and then I begged some more. And Dwight was able to make our insurance company honor the deal that we had. And, and it kept our rates much more stable last year as compared. So they could have went up 25 last year and 25 this year, and we'd be in the same position. So it's not quite as bad, but it is a massive chunk of money. So we have set aside for that scenario. And if it, if it continues, I, I also agree with his statement. We, Clay and I had lunch with Senator Simon, drove to Tallahassee and had to rush back. We didn't break the speed limit, but we come close. He thinks that his 18 month, you know, getting that litigation was the first, but it's not the last thing they need to do. They've got to do something to backstop the reinsurance market. And, and again, I favor helping the homeowners that, not the, even the businesses of the rental market, but the homeowners, because I can tell you, the mom and pops are, a lot of old people can't afford $500 a month for insurance. And it's 500 now, and it might be more than that later. But, you know, and our other look, and Clay and I talked about this coming home, is, and we've got some FEMA restrictions. But we, we, we played by the rules and insured and were covered. We had to sue our insurance company. That's one of the reasons we're with a different company now. But a lot of people that didn't have insurance, counties and cities too, or were underinsured, FEMA made them whole. So they didn't pay, and then we all got to pay. And we, we may have to look if it keeps going up, you know, dropping wind coverage on some of these buildings, like the courthouse. If it blows away, we not going to have to worry about anything else, because that's, you know, I mean, it is what it is. It probably is not going to burn. I guess somebody could bomb it. But if it blows away, if that courthouse blows away, there's not going to be anything left for us to worry about. So, but, you know, that's a huge chunk. I mean, it's a seven or eight million dollars on our, on our, on our list. And again, we keep adding things. Every time we add a fire station, every time we add a community center, every time we water system park, that adds up and all of it goes on the list. But again, we can't continue to take 50% increases, not when you're talking about half a million dollar budget. So, but I do appreciate your help last year. And I, I hope you can have us some better news in a couple of weeks. But we're prepared for some bad news.
Yeah. The, the positive thing was on our fact.
Yes, yeah.
On the liability.
That side was really good.
We, we were able to, well, A, number one, we found an error in the computation, and it brought it down by about $40,000.
So it was good.
Just by catching that, that one error. So that was a positive thing. And then it looks like work comp, the mod rate is trending down. So that's very positive for the county from that perspective. Though, even though your wages have gone up, the rate of the actual mod rate declination should more than compensate for any adjustment that you went up in part wages.
And the board just did an incentive package that we're starting to, to encourage that for no work, lost time, work accidents. So hopefully, that'll continue to trend downward. Because at one point, we had a, it was 0.8, I think. I don't think we got below 0.8, but 0.9, yeah. And 0.8 is a lot better at a 20% discount than a 1.2 or whatever we were a few years ago.
I think it was like 1.3.
Okay, yeah. It was, which means you're paying 130% instead of 80%.
Yeah.
Who would have thought?
Who would have thought?
Workers' comp would have been more stable than the property market.
Yeah. But a lot of, but a, but a lot of that, Commissioner Macron, was due to the changes that the Legislature made years back.
Correct.
Absolutely.
That made a very positive impact on the work comp market.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dwight.
So that's, we'll wait for the rest of the story. Page nine. Fun, fun, fun. Health insurance. So the recommendation is on page nine, but if you turn to page 10, and I'm going to try to paraphrase without getting too deep in the weeds, and Brett can correct me or come up if, if I say something wrong. I told Todd he didn't need to come over this afternoon, that we can handle it. But staff's recommending, recommending that we go with United. It is actually a decrease from our current plan. The current plan, the original renewal was it, was over three, and then they come down when we bid it to 2.75. I think it's 3.75, and then they come down a percent.
One, one percent.
To, to, to 2.75, but it was still a, you know, pretty big jump. We have been a benefactor to the pool that we've been in for several years. We've been at 80% loss rate, or 79, I think, this past year. So we're subsidizing the other pool. We, we had asked them for zero, and that's not the way it worked out. The positives with United, one, it's a negative increase, which is positive. And that assumes that we go with their vision plan, which was also the low bid. They provide a $10,000 wellness benefit, which we're starting back the wellness program and the health fair and whatnot. I think we're, first one's going to be next month. But the thing that I like the most is that they will allow us to do a profit sharing plan. This is a fully insured benefit, but just like the pool that we're in now, we're at 79%. You know what I mean? And they're, they're making a profit of 21% off of that 1.5 million dollar premium in rough terms. They would split that profit with us 50/50. So if we stayed the same next year, we'd get a check back. The county would get a check back for over 100 grand, which would buy it down even more. Nobody else offered that. The rundown cost for exiting the pool is, is estimated at $47,000. We had set aside 50 back when we initially got in the pool, about seven or eight years ago. So back to page nine. Staff's recommendation is to switch to United. Their HSA plan is essentially similar to the county's current plan. It's a high deductible HSA, $2,500 for individuals, $5,000 for family. That's deductibles, prescription coverage, and 100% toll insurance. Features of United plan including a surplus sharing arrangement, which the county received 50% return on any claim surplus in a favorable year, but no, assume no additional risk should it be a bad year. Premium holiday for the second contract month is, is included such that the county will not have any premium due for that month. A review of their networks reveals reasonably close match to the current Florida Blue plan. Additionally, a half of, of a percent health insurance discount is included in return for retaining United for voluntary vision coverage. Net premiums after taking vision and the premium holiday are accounted as follows. The employee only, $640.91. Employee spouse, $1,094.30. Employee children, $993.79. An employee family, $1,678.31. The dental insurance is the same. We're in a contract with Florida combined, I guess, at least for another year. Life insurance, the same thing. We're in a two-year rate guarantee, the second year of that with United Life. And again, the vision, recommend you switch to United to take advantage of the half a percent discount for health insurance. The benefit is also no cost to the board. It's an employee option. They have to pay it if they choose to get it as a volunteer benefit. United's vision rates were the lowest of the bids that we had. I think we had seven respondents on the, I don't have that list with me. I don't blame you.
Six or seven.
They were six or seven. Accepting this option results in a slight reduction in the net healthcare insurance premium for the calendar year. The only other thing I'll say about I, what is the name of the one we've got? VP?
VSP.
Yeah, VSP.
V, VSP?
Yeah.
You know, in the past, we've been concerned about the I Center. Now the I Center's left. It appears, and Mr. McKnight has been working with PanCare about getting the clinic open. We've made him a proposal to go in the Health Department building, basically where the old, I guess where the old Pan, PanCare medical side was. Both, most of these coverages would take it, but PanCare's going to take the United vision as well. And I think there were a couple more. Walmart was included, and America's Best, and I can't remember which one. I Center is not on United's, but again, they pay out a network rate, so.
Yeah, they have a large network, but one thing about it, I Center is not on it. So just FYI.
Well, we only switched to the I Center years ago, I mean, a few years ago, because, you know, they were here in Port San Diego.
That's correct. That was the convenience of everybody going for, yeah. And everybody loved that convenience and whatnot. But now that they're not here, it's, it's not as important. It doesn't seem like, anyway.
So, so one quick question. So the renewal with the public risk management, Florida Blue, it's, it's 659.55 for individual, for employee only. So the, on the other side, it says that, what, United, 640.91. So that is including the vision, but on the other side, it's not including the vision, Florida Blue?
So.
So it does, that includes the discount of 0.5%.
So if, if the board takes the proposal, the, versus the renewal rate with Blue Cross, it would save the individual $19 a month, basically. It's 659.55 to 640.91. So $18 and some change, whatever that number is. So it's, Blue Cross, their reduced rate, their original was 3.75. They came back at 2.75. It's 2.75 increase versus a 0.16 decrease for the proposed.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners? So I'm assuming the same, I mean, pretty much same benefits, same hospital coverage?
Yes, sir. Pretty much. It's pretty much very, very similar. The providers, all the hospital, local hospitals are included in, in both. I do need to say this one caveat. The Aetna was actually lower than both of them. It was a negative 2.48. But it did not offer the profit sharing plan, which, you know, that is pretty big, in my opinion. It'll help cover some of the property casualty increases.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners? Mr. Lowery and Mr. Hammond? No questions? All right. Thanks, sir. All right. We, we going to vote on this now? We need to make...
If, if you want to. I mean, we can do it. We need to do it today or tomorrow.
All right. Questions, Commissioner? You want to do it tomorrow?
Will everybody look over?
All right. And the, the last thing on this is, it, it's my intent to negotiate whichever way you go to get back on a January to December 31 cycle. We changed this after the meltdown, and I want to say probably about, oh, whenever, whenever it all went crash. And the idea at that time was that we could budget for it more appropriately. That was when it was going up. And, you know, we were cutting folks, laying folks off and whatnot. So we changed from a, from a calendar year to a budget year. The problem is, the deductibles run calendar year. So every time we bid, the new provider has to pay the runout on the deductible. If you've already mentioned deductible, that, so it's a disadvantage to changing plans typically. So, and about 80 or 90% of the private plans run on a calendar year. So I would say that that'll be our next goal, is to get back on a January to December calendar year for, for health insurance contracts.
All right. Thanks, sir. Any more questions, Commissioners, from Mr. Hammond? All right. Moving on down to item C, tentative 2023-24 budget.
All right. We will hit the high points unless you want me to get deep in the weeds. And then I'll take questions. Staff is recommending a budget reduction, a millage rate reduction. We're going to need to certify that to the property praiser, hopefully that you can vote on that today. And then we're going to set the first budget hearing date. We have a proposal for you. And then we've got a rough estimate of when we could do the final. The school board has set their date, so they get to go first, and then, then we get to go. So if you want to, we'll start on page three. Countywide assessment, 3 billion, 66 million and some change. Of course, that's all time high. St. Joe Fire Control District, the same way, 2 billion, 71 million. We're proposing a three tenths of a mil reduction in Avron Tax at 6.2. No change in the fire control districts at half a mil each. Significant reduction in the MSTUs because of the values of the beach. Beachfront would go down 18.92%. Interior, 16.36% and Bayside, negative 17.77%. If you adopt the proposed millage, the countywide levy would levy 19 million, $11,105 in, in county taxes. St. Joe Fire Control District would levy 1 million, $35,960. Tupelo, $90,512. Overstreet, $41,091. Howard Creek, $23,204. And then the combined MSTUs are $400,000, which is the, the yearly payment on that bond. Just note that we were able to pay off the budgeted and appropriated side bond, November, Sherry? November. So that, the one bond is, is retired, and the only one that's left is the, the voted debt service, the, the MSDU at the Cape. So on page four. The bottom number is pretty staggering. I think my first budget was 43. Your proposed budget this year is 103 million, $298,895. Of that, Avron Taxes for the general funds, 19 million. Overall Avron Taxes, when you include the MSTUs and fire districts, is 20 million, 601. Local option, fuel taxes, 6 million, 520. Other general taxes, 96,000. Permits, fees, and spatial assessments, 777,000. Federal grants, 2.981 million. And this is just, that's proposed to be spent this year. Pilt, a measly $1,200. State grants, 6.8 million. State shared revenues, 4.8 million. State pilt, 6 million. Charge for services, 6 million, 365,000. Fines, 9,000. Miscellaneous revenue, 650,000. And a 5% reduction. Interfund transfer, cash carry forward, 48 million, 559, for a total of 103,298,895. Page 10, on the revenue side. Now Sherry's going to tell me that we have to put a caveat. We have not received the final state numbers, and this is something else that we need to grasp in a nice way, that the state knows that every county has a certain timeline that starts July 1. And most counties have to have the budget due by July 15, and you have to certify to the property praiser by August 4th in most years. It's impossible for counties to accurately put together a good budget if we don't have state revenues estimated by July the 15th at the latest. And hopefully, they could be sooner. But we do not. So Sherry has done her best to estimate the state shared revenue portion. So it's the best we can do with what we have. And I'll start on page 13 and go through the budgets if you're ready. The board budget was a reduction of 1.03%, 892 to 883. The changes mainly were FICA Medicare and retirement. Retirement changes were not near as bad as the original estimates. The original estimates had massive increases in retirement. The original estimates had massive increases in retirement because of COLA changes, they actually dropped that. It's unfortunate for folks that are gonna retire, including me, at some juncture. But it is, uh, it did save the state a pile of money because they cut that out. They did make some positive changes to, uh, the rates and, uh, drop and some of things like that, but again, the, the percentage increase was minor compared to what was proposed. And you can see those changes there, any questions, any questions on your budget? The big move out was contracts, other services, Sherry? No, it was a fifty, other services, yes. Okay, no questions, administrator budget, this was a, this was a reduction of sixteen point seven five percent. This was a moving contract out of my budget, uh, that, that has been paid under, uh, admin that we moved to, to another budget. Only real increases were, of course, salary increases that we put in, six percent, and, uh, FICA Medicare and retirement. Overall, a ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollar reduction. Clerk to the board, an increase of forty-two thousand sixty. Property praiser, an increase of eighty-three thousand, seven ninety-five. Tax collector, an increase of one oh four, seven ten. Risk management, an increase of seventy-three thousand, six ninety. Now, part of this is the, uh, incentive program for workers' comp, it's the health fair. I think it was ten thousand for the health fair, which will actually be, it will show up on the revenue side because insurance is gonna pay ten thousand of that. Uh, training. And then, of course, FICA Medicare and, sorry? And Todd's contract that was moved from admin to this budget, so. Which is where it needs to be paid for anyway, that's more accurate. The insurance department, a twenty-four point four four percent increase, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, that actually showed a decrease in workers' comp and then, of course, a massive increase in, in, uh, property casualty. And I think it was a minor increase in liability, it was, it was relatively, yeah. So of that, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of that is increase in, in property casualty insurance. The value adjustment board has a fifteen point nine four percent increase, and Sherry, I don't, don't remember why. Just rounding, okay. Checks out, so it depends on how many petitions we have and whatnot, but audit, no change in that, a hundred and twenty thousand. OMB, uh, twenty-three thousand, two forty increase. Most of that is salary wages and, uh, FICA Medicare retirement. County engineer is ten thousand, fifteen dollar increase. Again, most of that salary wages, retirement. County attorney, twenty-two thousand, four thirty-one. Planning and zoning is a negative sixty-six oh two. And I'm, I'm assuming that's the retirement ending. Part, partial year. GIS. No, no change. IT, uh, thirty-seven thousand, one thirty, and that is, uh, mainly FICA Medicare retirement changes. And then a service contract of some sort, that was nineteen, Dennis, what was that, nineteen?
We have to meet some state guidelines, so part of that's for training for county employees we have to provide and also for cloud storage. It has to do with, uh, cyber attacks, these state inoperative guidelines, we have to meet by twenty twenty-four. And that's what the profit increases.
Okay. Supervisors of elections, seventy-three thousand, forty. Of that, uh, seventy thousand, one hundred is the, uh, presidential year election deal. So, I mean, that's just, it is what it is when you have three elections in one year. They had a retirement and they swap around, it saves some money, but I think they had an insurance change, it cost money, but seventy-three thousand total. We didn't change this, and we may have to come back to it, we did not change utilities at, uh, three hundred and forty thousand, four hundred for utilities at the courthouse. County services, now this is where we moved from both the board budget and admin, uh, contracts and whatnot. Uh, it's a one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar increase. The sheriff, three sixty-five, three sixty-five, and that's what general fund is funding, of course. The total is five seventy-one oh two, but that's one forty-seven for the TDC, which is seventy percent of the TDC portion. Is additional state grant, fifty-eight thousand, and then, I can't remember what. I put another twenty on top of what you asked for, for beach driving deal. We got to increase that to one ten, and I got you another twelve five for, on your payout from twenty-seven five to forty. I think that's the change of what we, uh, what I hadn't had a chance to talk to you about, even though you called me and I forgot to call you back. So his, his total is five seventy-one oh two, but the board's portion of funding it from Avilon is three sixty-five, three sixty-five. Fire coordinator is an increase of twelve hundred and thirty dollars, and it's just benefits. Jail is an increase of one thirty-nine, one seventy-five. Of that, we got, was it, how much would we get from the grant, one oh eight? Is it in that range? It's not in that, so last year, we didn't get the increase, and we were able to get the law enforcement increase. They funded it this year, tell Representative Show thank you and Senator Simon. But, so that is gonna pay for their pay raise to keep pace with the state, so. Anyway, that's a six percent increase. County probation, uh, forty-seven hundred and twenty, and it's pay raise and, uh, FICA Medicare retirement. Building department, this is a one hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase, this is fee-based. Now, one thing that we did change this time, starting October one, we will be charging them rent, uh, office rent. So that's the biggest chunk of that increase is the office rent that they're gonna pay the board. Uh, we have to keep that money in a separate pile. We also assumed that we could have a retirement sometime during the year, and we, we had that budgeted as well and, and training for a new position. We're not gonna hire a new position until we have a retirement because we've had a pretty substantial slowdown in non-cash contractors, so. Nine-one-one, emergency management, local match, no change in that grant, it's a hundred and eighty-two thousand. Uh, seven hundred and thirty dollar increase in the twelve fifty service charge, it is what it is. Honeyville Community Center, uh, we increased at five, it may not be enough. We got another problem, uh, with utilities at the Honeyville Community Center. How much was the light bill last month? So we got to be more diligent on, on that. Because we hadn't been renting, but we have been paying big light bill.
We may need a, um.
Is that just the building?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
May need a Wi-Fi control thermostat, can be controlled from home office here. Or TDC, one of the two.
And change locks.
Are we running ice machine up there too?
Well, we are at the, at the, at the par, at the ballpark, but not, I don't think we got, we run it inside all the time. We may have to.
How much access is?
I hate to turn that off.
How many's got access to that?
We, we do not have enough money to pay a twelve hundred dollar a month light bill, just saying.
Yeah, that's crazy, yes.
Uh, policy change.
Policy change. Uh, so nine-one-one, emergency communications, up five hundred dollars. Uh, EMS, one hundred and forty thousand, eight sixty-five. Uh, the vast majority of that is retirement changes, salary increases, and some minor equipment increases. We will search and rescue, no change, medical examiner, uh, one point six percent increase. Again, that's what Bay County bills us, and we divide it by the sixth county, fourteenth circuit, so. Even though it's a bad amount, uh, it's a necessary evil, sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Uh, extension agent, uh, reduction of four thousand, fourteen dollars. Conservation, resource management, eight hundred and eleven dollar increase. Beach maintenance, uh, thirteen percent increase. ARC, no change, twenty-one thousand, two forty. All right, so this is a big one, so the, our contract is finally expired, our interlocal with the old DRA went away, which saves us a chunk. But factoring in the new interlocal, uh, it's still a pretty good reduction, so went from four forty-nine to ninety-five oh fifty-one. EDC, it is a reduction of, it's an increase, excuse me, increase of four hundred and fifty dollars. Veteran service, it's an increase of thirteen thousand, seven ninety-nine. And this is more of the percentage of, of what VSO is being paid for by the board versus, uh, HHRP and CHIP, is that correct, Sherry? So this is more of a funding change than it is a, uh, any, any changes to salary. Animal control, uh, four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar change, a hundred and forty-one thousand, eight sixty-five. Now, that's just the animal control part, the humane society is sixty-three thousand, six hundred. Uh, we did a flat six percent for humane society. Gulf County Health Department, seventy-one thousand, three sixteen. In the event that we get the PanCare eye center, we may have to help them a little bit. Uh, we offered them, or made a proposal to them for pretty much rent-free the first year, and it ramps up. So she's losing a chunk with PanCare leaving on the other side, uh, so we may have to help them a little bit with utilities or whatnot, but, they're gonna pay some utilities, but it's a, it's a pretty generous first-year offer, and then it, it ramps up over a couple of years to, when they're paying regular rent. Energy care, this is what we have to pay, the four fifty, four twenty-five per person. Went up twenty-five thirty-two. State, it is what it is. We were, apparently we've got more folks going to the mental health folks, so it's a pretty good chunk, it's a hundred percent increase, twenty thousand from forty thou, uh, twenty thousand to forty thousand. ARC stayed the same, uh, aid, eight thousand, forty-five. Senior citizens, we did the same thing, a six percent increase, fifty-six thousand, nine sixty. Libraries, uh, this was their request, so they got a five thousand dollar increase, one twelve, eight fifty-five. Florida voting, fifty, fifty-eight thousand, one twenty-five, it's a twenty-two percent increase. Court administrator, no change, state attorney, fifty dollar change, public defender, negative seven hundred and twenty dollars. No change to courthouse, uh, facilities. Twenty-five percent increase courthouse technology, and that's, they fund their, or not.
That's their request with fees and the budget to cover.
If, if they're there, they get it, and if they're not.
Well, once we budget it, they get it, whether it comes in or not. But as of right now, the expectations will have been to cover and request.
Fifteen hundred dollar increase for technology at the state's attorney's office, forty, four hundred and fifty-five dollars for the public defender. Now, we have not finalized this portion on the financial side. These are estimates, but again, uh, it is what it is, so the sheriff's got a trust fund, jail's got a trust fund, there's a crime prevention trust fund, but you can't spend it if you don't have it, but it's there, so we'll firm it up between now and September, so. Total fund's a million, one ninety-three, so pretty good chunk, but most of that is seizure and inmate welfare. And unfortunately, they have lots of strings tied to those, so. Page thirty-three, so we'll skip those because we haven't done that. Pretty healthy increase in the gas tax. So this, Secretary of Road and Bridge went up three hundred and fifty thousand, five dollars. And we try to keep a healthy reserve because we never know when something's gonna blow out, like happens from time to time, so we got a proposed one million, seventy-one thousand in that budget. Muscley Control, again, this is grant, so I, it's an increase of thirteen point two seven percent. Public work starts on page thirty-five, consolidated public works, overall budget is just a three point five nine percent increase. Thank you, Mr. Cothran, that helps the world go around and around. Sadly, one of the ways that we were able to fund that good reduction is because we don't have enough work crew folks, so we've eliminated those positions for the time being. Page forty-one, start St. Joe Fire Control. So I had Sherry break this out because it gets a little bit confusing, even for me. So I, I got her to break out the fire departments with new revenue because we have several pots of money. So we have new revenue, and then we have the money that they're saving, that what we call cash carry forward in some instances, but we also have a reserve account. So some fire departments, like we'll take beaches to start with. So new revenue in this year's proposed budget is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. But their unspent budget, fifty thousand, their unspent reserves, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred. Unanticipated revenue, one hundred and eleven thousand, two sixty-five. So their total budget, new money's only two forty-eight, but their total budget is six thirty-four. Now, some of that is set aside and it's in, in the different compartments. Did I explain that close to being right, Sherry? But sometimes when people look at the budget and they say, oh, South Guff only got a hundred thousand and Highlandview's got four hundred, well, not really, because you gotta look at all the signs. So Highlandview new budget money, seven eighteen, the exact same for White City. Highlandview's unspent is two hundred, White City's is two ninety. Unspent reserves, Highlandview is one oh nine, White City's one forty-four. Unanticipated revenue, Highlandview's seventy-two, White City's one hundred. So Highlandview's total budget, five thirty-nine, White City's total budget, six ninety-two. South Guff, new money, two forty-eight, five seventy-eight. Unspent budget, fifty thousand, their unspent reserves, one ninety-seven, three ninety. Unanticipated, eighty-six thousand, five fifty-five, total budget, five hundred and seventy, ninety-two. Now, South Guff has bought one truck, their used ladder, that should be delivered anytime, that we thought would already be here by now. And the board has committed a hundred thousand to their tanker purchase, where's Matt? You got anything on that?
That truck's supposed to be living third tank, we'll see.
That'd be a good day. And then, where are we on the tanker?
As soon as we get down to the tanker, we can go out and bid on the tanker when they're reporting.
So, so the caveat is some of South Guff's savings is committed. Okay, so when we get to the, the next line, uh, that's the, the tenth of a mil. So when we get to the, the next line, uh, that's the, the tenth of a mill that, that is we save in reserve. And the board has the say on how that goes. We have, and, and this typically for the last five or six years that Don started, is it alternates between San Joe Beach and South Guff about helping them buy trucks. So San Joe Beach got a truck a couple of years ago, South Guff got the hundred this year. So your policy right now is that you'll commit a hundred, up to a hundred thousand to help one of those back and forth.
Michael, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Something we need to look at and, and I just want to say kudos to the chief at South Guff for, he found a used truck, ladder truck, a lot less money than what a new truck would have been. And, uh, sometimes we don't, you don't need a brand new truck with all the bells and whistles to do what we need to do. And, and that's something down the road I think we need to look at. But I just wanted to, you know, kudos to the South Guff Board and the chief for, uh, going that route and saving the county a ton of money, so.
I'd say at least half a million.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and again, just like you said, we don't have the call volume. Some of our trucks be twenty years old and not have ten thousand miles on them. And Clay and I have been talking about some of these custom trucks that are just way outrageous that we need to buy. Again, be a little smarter because the inflation on fire trucks is like inflation with everything else. It's astronomical. The three hundred thousand dollar truck that used to be before Hurricane Michael, for example, are five hundred. So, yeah, if we can get a good situation like they did, was, where was it, Ocala?
St. Augustine.
St. Augustine.
Yeah.
You know, and it's been completely redone, refurbished and whatnot, certified. So, yeah, that's a good idea. So the district money, uh, that's left in the pot. We gotta, we gotta take their hundred thousand out of this. But today anyway, as proposed, is six hundred and forty-one thousand. Stone Mill Creek, new money is thirty-one thousand, unspent is one dollar. Unspent reserves is fifty-five hundred and fifty-three dollars. Unanticipated revenue's ten thousand. Total budget, forty-five thousand, seven fifty-five. And I think they had a, they had bought something that was about, that about broke them. They had a grant that they, they bought a, a, some kind of equipment anyway last year. So they, they used all their reserves, but I mean, that's what it's there for. We tapo, new money is twenty-seven thousand, one hundred. They had a dollar. Unspent reserves, fifteen thousand, two twenty-five. Unanticipated, five, six, three, one. Total budget, forty-six thousand, six hundred. Dal Keith, thirty-one thousand, six eighteen. New money, they had three dollars. Unspent revenue, thirty thousand, seven thirty-five. Unanticipated, fifty-seven, twenty-eight. Total budget, sixty-six thousand, five hundred. The reserve in the district, bottom line is ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Overstreet, they don't have to split with anybody. Their new money's forty-one thousand, ninety-one. They have unspent of thirty-three, five. They have reserves of twenty-eight, four sixty. They have unanticipated revenue of eighty-seven, ninety-four. Total budget for Overstreet is one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety. Howard's Creek, new money, twenty-three thousand, two oh four. Unspent, forty-eight thousand. Unspent reserves, twenty-five thousand. Unanticipated, fifty-two, forty-six. Total budget for Howard's Creek Fire Department, one hundred and one thousand, one ninety-five. And then the breakdown at the bottom, if you've got any questions about that. But that's probably a little bit better than just reading it out of the book. And it looks a lot different because it doesn't show the cash carry forward and the, and the restricted reserves. Any more questions on fire departments? I can just go ahead and skip the rest of them if that's good.
Any question? No question.
Okay. The EMS grant fund on fifty, no change. Ship fund. I don't see any change. Have we changed, have we changed anything with ship?
The primary change, we'll have less payroll and more other services.
And if, if that's still on the board, we can talk about that tomorrow. If you wanna go ahead and talk about that tomorrow.
Yes, fine.
Y'all just tell me if we wanna. So Sherry planned to talk about that tomorrow. So fifty-two, now this is subject to massive change. And when I say massive change, it's gonna be mass, massive increase. To keep from corrections, we don't budget until we know we're gonna spend it. But the chances of the C D B G, D R, one, two, three disaster recovery grants and the Diana Bridge being only four hundred and four thousand, five hundred or zero. So this may be a fifteen million dollar budget before it's ended, but we'll have to change that throughout the year.
This is only based off current contracts?
So. So what we intend to do a lot of these, like we've talked about before. On page fifty-three, this just goes over the grants that are active. And again, there's a, almost a million dollar increase in them, but it, but they're nowhere near the total amount of grants. They're just what Sherry just said. If we've got active contract in here, if they're not, we don't. So, okay, yeah. So on the bottom of fifty-three, you can see those. Said the burn grant went down, but sheriff's office grant went up fifty-eight thousand. That's new money. They got one eighty-eight last year, then new money, fifty-eight. The jail didn't get last year, but got one oh eight, six sixty this year. I'm assuming the wastewater deal is that engineering that we proposed that we plan to spend this particular coming up year. Two hundred thousand in C I G P. Stormwater, hazard mitigation. And Firdout. Any questions on grants? If not, we'll skip the rest of the grant fund. C D B G, that's an increase of ten thousand. And this is the port authority's interest free payment. Industrial Park, same thing, increase of thirty-two, seven fifty-five. Most of that is building rent. We're getting close to closing out one nineteen, but not quite. County development, it's an increase and this is a positive thing. This is, uh, sand, dirt, pit money and reserves. Hospital fund, increase of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. This is tax revenue coming in. We have committed on the, to spend more as well, so. No change in the wireless nine one one. Two point eight six percent increase in nine one one services. The disaster fund. Pretty good increase. This is where we're cash flowing a lot of this FEMA money. And unfortunately, even though the, the number looks good, the, the actual number's not that. So we're waiting on a lot of money from FEMA's deal, so. T D C, pretty good increase. And again, we thank Representative Scho for getting the T D C bill passed. The way I proposed it in the budget is the sheriff gets seventy percent, EMS gets twenty, and we reserve ten for reserves and for potential, or fire departments. So it's a reimbursement, so it's a reimbursement. They spend the money and then they can ask reimbursement. It has to be new stuff. So it would be like for Jody, it would be a new shift or a shift on the weekends or shift on busy holidays or whatnot. That would be extra over and above. We we allocated fifty thousand to each city in addition to what they are currently getting. The city, we will ask for assistance with lights at T L James. And, uh, the city of Port St. Joe has the splash pad, fifty thousand in. And that is in addition to the money we already gave. We have set aside money for the swap for the parking lot and area there adjacent to the country club. And for the addition, new, new, uh, I guess might as well say new club, new, uh, pro shop on moving it to the number ten end and renovate the clubhouse. And Clay, Clay's new employee Sylvia's doing a great job, by the way, so. My complaints are way down, which means you must be doing a perfect job. H H R P, uh, it is what it is. The million eight twenties, the new money. I think Sherry's wishful thinking that it's all gonna, that it's all gonna be spent. Is it showing that? But we could pray. Okay. Might wanna lay a bed if that happens. Page seventy-one, so this is another one I'm gonna have to explain in further detail. So this is your parks budget. I increased it forty-five thousand, but there's some explanations. So Dead Lakes in District One had a match for the Firdout grant. Was that thirty-seven, five? Oh, Gaskin, what did I say, Dead Lakes? I apologize. Still District One, but Dead Lakes. Or Ga- Gaskin, excuse me, Gaskin. Dead Lakes is fifty-two, eighty. That's our portion. The bathroom that's not in the, uh, well, actually, I guess there's two bathrooms, one at the boat ramp and one at the playground equipment. But they pay the rest of the utilities. Honeyville is eighty-three, fifty. That's separate than the community center. Gaskin's forty thousand, fifty-five. Of that thirty-seven, five is the match. Dal Keith Park. What do we have there? It's thirty dollars. I don't know. Anyway, so overall maintenance and, and recreation, twenty-four, two fifteen, seventy-seven, nine thirty. The vast majority of that though is that thirty-seven, five match. In District Two, Beacon Hill Park, twenty-four thousand, five twenty. Overstreet, fourteen hundred. Overall seventeen thousand, six sixty-five for the rest of the parks for a total budget of forty-three thousand, five eighty. The positive is, uh, Duke Energy gave us twenty-five thousand dollars for, to, for flags, to cover flags. So that has been put in this, this year. I will tell you, your guys have done a great job where we know that we're gonna have high winds and bad weather. And we did for a couple of months there about getting them down because they, they cannot take the fifty, sixty mile an hour winds without ripping them up. District Three, uh, White City, fifty-two hundred. Howard's Creek Lower Land in four thousand, twenty. Donny Break Park, thirty-four, sixty. Overall, twenty-seven thousand, six sixty-five for a total of forty thousand, three forty-five. The caveat there is we're gonna have to do something about the wind mark, uh, situation. You're gonna be way over in utilities. We had a thousand dollar sewer bill a couple of times in the last year. So we got T D C working on that. One was a break after the, after the winter storm with Christmas. The other was a, I don't know, pull it running something anyway. We run up a hell of a bill, so, uh, we may have to adjust that or do something else. District Four, combined seventeen thousand, six sixty-five. District Five, Salinas, seventeen thousand, three eighty. Cape Palms, twenty-nine, thirty. Overall, twenty-two, six sixty-five for a total budget of forty-two, nine seventy-five. Combined parks and recreation budget, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred. That includes the twenty-five thousand in revenue from Duke. And it also includes the match of thirty-seven, five in, in your deal. My thoughts are, it's probably not enough, but that's what it is. It's our recommendation, twenty-two percent increase. We can explore some other, um, options for revenue in the parks there. Now, on the revenue side, speaking of which, the lease has been paid for, I guess, a year now at the Dead Lakes. They should, as they fill up, that number should go up. They've been paying the minimum, which is with fifteen hundred dollars a month. The Howard's Creek lease is gonna come to fruition pretty quick. So that is helping some, but it's not, not helping enough. Page seventy-five, public improvement. This is the local option gas tax that we use to pay the bonds. It's up nine point seven, eight percent. The biggest benefit we're getting is the clerk's office is making us some interest money now for the first time in a long time. So it's, it makes a, a dent. M S T U, it's up six point eight percent. So on seventy-seven, this is the one we paid off, Sherry, is that? One down, one to go. Capital Projects Fund. And expenditures are decreasing, uh, and reserve is increasing. We cut out some expenditures because y'all agreed to purchase that Motrim this year. And it's been promised it's gonna be delivered this week. Charge them interest if they don't. We got a lot of cutting to do. I can't say enough good about the country club. Revenue increased forty-three point four five percent. Membership is way up. Again, I, I was afraid it was gonna be a nightmare. It's not turned out to be. Clay's doing a great job. Jordan and his staff doing a great job. So I appreciate the board continuing to support it and we're, uh, well, Clay, you can tell them what we're doing on irrigation.
Irrigation project should kick off September third. The contractor will be in town and, um, for the next three months after that. I mean, that's a million dollar project, a million dollar investment. But it'll make a world of difference in their ability to grow grass and control bugs and control all the bad stuff too. So, uh, yeah, it's a big investment. And the expansion of the clubhouse, so the plan is where the pro shop is now, I mean, it's essentially glorified closet. Used to be a closet. I mean, he sells over a hundred thousand dollars of merchandise out of that little bit of thing. So we'll try to get a better pro shop on the tenth T. So if you look at clubhouse on the left-hand side of the clubhouse, we're gonna expand that and, uh, move the pro shop to that side. That should make a world of difference too. Just try to continue to invest in that because it is, they did, uh, last month was the best month on record since the county's had it. There were twenty-two hundred rounds and fifteen hun- fifteen hundred of them were out of town rounds. So that's tourist rounds, that's not locals. So it, it's, it's doing a great job. And I agree, Jordan and the staff out there are just phenomenal.
So we get through with this, these couple of capital projects. We've got an idea to do an event center, do something there on that property if we can get it next to where that parking lot is. We, uh, we need a place where people can have events, so, you know, for the public. So something that they could rent, they could cater right next door. It would be a perfect place to, to have. But again, uh, baby steps, but we're moving in the right direction. Solid Waste Fund, uh, it's going up sixteen point zero six percent. Austin's done a fabulous job with this. I, I will say, uh, if something doesn't change. I will say, if something doesn't change with the cost of hauling and the cost of disposing, that we will have to look at a rate increase if something doesn't change on it. I mean, we, you know, they've done a great job, but the Pritchett contract went up massively. Waste Management only went up a little bit. But again, when a little bit and you're doing inflation and it's five, six, seven percent, that's real money when you're talking about a million bucks. So, our current pace is not sustainable if prices don't come down now. Just like we had an escalator, the price for hauling can go down if diesel goes down and some of these other things. But if it doesn't, we're going to have to raise the tipping fee.
What's the timeline on that, potential raise?
We're going into our second year of two-year contract.
So, right now, I would say that the escalator is probably not going to hurt us this year. But the problem is, it's already hurt us. I'm telling you, it's hurt us bad. I forgot the actual number, but it was a pretty good chunk. So, all of our cushion went away with that hauling extra charge. And then, our contract with Waste Management is, you know, it's a much slower escalator, but it still increases. Now, we've had real good participation. I think, you know, all that's well and good, but the, based on building department revenues, it's slowing down. And volume's the only way we're going to keep not having to raise that rate. So, just a heads up, I'm not requesting it today. But I would say that if it doesn't change in six months, I'll be asking you to raise the rate. If you ask for a timeline, that'd be my guess. Unless Austin could pull a rabbit out of a hat. Water System Fund. This is a reduction of twenty-two thousand, seven, ten. And then, because of the contracting winded down on that project that we did, the overall budget's going down one thirty-eight, three forty. Of course, that's because that project has finished. All right? If you would like to take the constitutional officers, if they have anything, and the public. And then, I've got some requests for votes and to set some tentative dates.
All right, thanks, sir. Anybody from Ms. Norris's office? Fine, okay. All right. Sheriff, if you want to go. You good? All right. Any more constitu, anybody representing? Mr. Burke, you hiding back there? Oh, you hiding back there? Okay, I see you now. You good? All right, anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? References to the budget? Questions, concerns? I'm making this easier than I thought it was going to be. All right? Stand?
Mr. Chairman, I would request that you'll set the tentative mileage rate, the maximum that you could have at six point two, and we can certify to the property pressure.
Any questions, commissioners, before we vote?
That's a reduction of three tenths.
Three tenths.
Okay.
And based on everybody else around us, Bay and all these others, I'm glad we're able to. Again, that's, it doesn't happen overnight. So, y'all have been on a great trend for the last four years. Hopefully, this can continue.
Any more questions, concerns?
I just want to say, I think it's for us to be lowering the mileage, especially with a fifty percent increase on insurance and increases on, I know everything's gone up. I know, far as public works and all, everything you buy this day and time has gone up tremendously. And I know the hauling contract with Pritchett, I know, just, you know, can't say enough to the staff of what they've done. I just, in order to be able to make that reduction and, and with the increases and the way inflation's been, just want to say that.
All right. Anybody else, commissioners? I think anytime we can help the taxpayers out, it means a lot. So, hopefully, we can continue the trend, you know, helping them out. Every little bit that they can hold on to goes a long way. Any more questions, concerns? All right, if you guys good with the six point two, I entertain a motion. We said it.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Farrell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on this? All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion pass four and oh.
All right, for your first meeting, the school boards is on nine, seven. I recommend nine, six at five, oh, one.
When is that, five?
Yes, sir.
Y'all good with that? Five, oh, one, right?
Five, oh, one, yes, sir.
What's the date on that?
Nine, six, September the sixth.
Need no motion, but I do. Need a motion set today? Okay. So, the first hearing will be November, I mean, I'm sorry, not November, September sixth.
Yes, sir.
September sixth at five, oh, one.
Yes, sir.
And if y'all are good with that, we'll advertise that date. That'll go on, I guess, on the trim. All right, so this one, it gets a little trickier, but I'm recommending nine, eighteen for your final. That means that we have to have it advertised by nine, fourteen. Is that right? So, so the gist is this, for Sherry's benefit, if we don't have massive changes at the last minute, then it's not a problem. If we do, then it becomes a problem. But since we've had hurricanes and evacuations and all kinds of things in past years, and I don't want to have this nightmare, I'd rather do it the week ahead than the week after, if at all possible, just to get it over with.
All right, y'all, you guys good with nine, eighteen at five, oh, one? Monday.
It's a Monday. And I think the board meeting's the next, is the board meeting the next day?
Following week.
No, it's the twenty-sixth. It's the following week.
All right, we're good? All right, we're good with nine, eighteen for the final hearing?
You're good?
Yeah, we're good with it.
Well, let me thank Sherry because she does all the work. She did make my eyes tired several days, and I pulled all my hair out. It used to be long, but it takes a lot to put this together. It's over in an hour and twenty minutes, thank the good Lord. But it takes much to put this thing together. But I appreciate the constitutional officers. Everybody worked well with county staff. And I think you got a conservative, prudent budget. And again, it's not without hiccups. We got some, some bad things, but there's a pile of good things in here.
I mean, it's time to go.
Sounds like dance to me.
You good?
The only negative is we've got to do it all over again at nine o'clock in the morning. Other than that.
All right, commissioners, y'all got anything? Save for tomorrow. All right. Just time to thank everyone for coming out to the special meeting, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Macron. Second by Commissioner Farrell. Any opposition? Motion pass four and oh.
Yeah, we're pretty good.